I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of January 23rd, 2020 to order. Would the clerk please take the roll? President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Excused.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Miratato?
Here.
Trustee Pocic?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Excused.
Would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chester, would you like to start us off, please?
Uh, maybe. Yes, Mayor. With the start of the new year, the Glendale Heights Police Department would like to inform residents to date official documents with 2020, not just 20. Writing just 20 on documents leaves you vulnerable to scams and fraud. A scammer can easily change 20 to 2019 and try to cash an old check or forge unpaid debt. If you have any questions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department. Non-emergency number is 630-260-6070. The Village of Glendale Heights is collecting unbroken and unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off at the Public Works Garage located at 1635 Glen Allen Road on weekdays from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and lengths of mini lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, LED lights, and extension cords. For more information on holiday lights recycling, please call 630-260-6000. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Miratato?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Spring is right around the corner. Get ahead of the game with a day dedicated trying different sports at Wreckin' the Hub on Saturday, February 8th, from 9:30 a.m. to noon at the Sports Hub. This event includes obstacle course races, prizes, demonstrations, door prizes, a fitness orientation, discounted registration, and much more. The day kicks off with a free continental breakfast, so come hungry. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6070. Sign up today to be a member of the Senior Center for Senior Citizens, which I'm not yet. The Center offers special events, arts and crafts, trips, a fitness center, and more. The annual membership to the Center for Senior Citizens costs $5 for a resident for the entire year. The non-resident rate is $30 per year. These low costs will help offset many programs, entertainment for events, staffing, snacks, and to continue to provide a premier center for senior citizens to the community. Register today to become a member of the Center for Senior Citizens and make friends that will last a lifetime. For more information, please call 630-260-6050. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join us Saturday, February 1st, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10 a.m. to noon for coffee with the mayor and village board. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at 630-909-5303. Join the Village of Glendale Heights in celebrating National Salute to Hospitalized Veterans Month by participating in the Valentine's for Veterans collection efforts. Annually, the Village delivers beautifully written and decorated valentines collected from the community to Illinois veteran homes and veteran hospitals. Drop off your valentines at Village Hall by Wednesday, February 5th, to ensure a timely delivery for Valentine's Day. Please do not decorate your cards with glitter, include social media contact information, or include envelopes with the cards. Should you have any questions, please call Nicole Lewis at 630-909-5327. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As a reminder to the residents, please do not shovel snow below or plow any snow onto Village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the police department, not police department's non-emergency number, at 630-260-6070. Register today for the Mother-Son Dance or the Daddy-Daughter Dance. Get ready to dance the evening away as we spend a night around the world for this year's theme. Enjoy activity-filled evening, complete with dinner and dessert. Mothers and Son Dance is Friday, February 21st, and Daddy-Daughter Dance is Saturday, February 22nd. Both events are at 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. Please register by February 14th. Those registering after the deadline will be charged a $10 late fee based on available space. The registration fee is $55 for residents, $65 for nonresidents, and $26 for each additional child. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor. Join the Center for Senior Citizens on a five-day, four-night trip to Tunica, Mississippi. We will be leaving from the Center for Senior Citizens on April 20th and returning on April 24th. We will be staying at the Gold Strike Hotel with some of the best lunch buffets, optional day excursion to Graceland for the Elvis Experience Tour, and visiting some of the best gaming locations between Las Vegas and Atlantic City. This fun trip is open to members and non-members. For more information, please visit the Center for Senior Citizens or call 630-260-6050. The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the Village during snowfall. There is no parking allowed on Village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any Village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more, and there is no parking allowed on any Village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We now go to pub-- oh, no. Chief Flint, did you want to embellish on that a little bit?
So, in following up to the public commentary, we have had a recent rash of car burglaries throughout the southeast part of Glendale Heights. We've had 27 between, from December through today. All of them have been unlocked cars. We have had three motor vehicles stolen during that timeframe throughout town, and they were unlocked vehicles with the key fobs in the car. So, we're asking residents to please lock their cars, remove all their valuables out of their cars before they go in for the night. If you don't want to lock your car for whatever reason, please don't have anything inside your car that's of value, because, you know, we've had a rash of them. We have several people identified. We're working diligently. We'll be out there on foot most nights, walking the areas. But until we're able to stop this through arrest, we would ask everybody to take all your valuables out of your cars and to lock your cars every night before you go to bed.
Thank you, Chief. We now go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Trustee Schmidt?
I move adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, new business. Number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business items two and three. Trustee Light?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on new business items two and three. Number two is an ordinance to amend Title IV, Chapter III of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That's for the number of licenses. First reading has been waived, and this would be ordinance number 2020-05. Chester?
Still moved, Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-05 is approved. Number three is an ordinance to amend Section 4-3-14 entitled Term of License Renewals Pro-rated Fees of Chapter III entitled Liquor Control of Title IV entitled Business Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading was waived, so this would be ordinance number 2020-06. Trustee Schmidt?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-06 is approved. We are now back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, um, a motion would be in order to recess the board meeting and go into committee of the whole so we can adjourn to executive session. Trustee Schmidt?
Still moved.
Second.
What?
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is recessed in committee of the whole. Trustee Miratato has.
Call the committee of the whole meeting of January 23rd, 2020. May I know which present?
No, don't.
Have any errands? Chester?
Flags.
No? Okay. We go to public comment? Go public comment. Committee recommendations. Number one, Plan Commission Recommendation. A recommendation to approve an application to allow a conditional use in the C2 Community Commercial District for restaurants serving alcohol beverages located at 324 East Army Trail Road, New Sun Sushi. Trustee Light?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being none, we'll move it to the board for recommendation. Discussion regarding presentation of the OSLAD grant by Keith.
Keith? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Board, and thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community on some exciting news. On Friday, January 17th, Governor Pritzker sent out a press release announcing $29.7 million in open space lands acquisition and development grants. We're going to call it OSLAD from now on. On the list of recipients was the Village of Glendale Heights for Camera Park and the amount of $400,000. Camera Park, as you know, is a 63-acre park that hosts many sports, including baseball, basketball, cricket, cross-country, and soccer, while having a skate park, multi-age level playground, walking paths, and a gazebo to hold wedding ceremonies or other special events. It also plays host to Glendale Heights Fest, the Show and Shine Car Show, Oktoberfest, and many other events throughout the year. Early in 2019, we began an update of our Camera Park Master Plan with the goal of making this highly utilized community park even better at serving the current and future needs of Village residents. Meeting with Village residents, the Parks and Recreation Committee, and Village officials served as the basis for our master plan, and from that master plan came the basis for our OSLAD grant application. The OSLAD grant includes the following items. A large inclusive play environment. Our current playground structure is over 20 years old and in need of replacing. Providing a more inclusive play area with several amenities that will entertain children of all ages while they visit the park is one of the top identified needs for Camera Park. The area for this playground will have a shaded seating area with overhead canopies and picnic tables so that groups and families can come and spend the day, no matter how hot or sunny the day is. Additionally, with the park's close proximity to two schools and the public library, this area can also be utilized by these organizations and other community groups for their programming. The addition of new amenities to Camera Park also includes a fitness, includes an area for fitness stations that can be used for circuit classes or individual workouts for park patrons who walk, jog, or run. An exercise challenge course with a synthetic turf and timing capabilities is also planned, as well as a nine-hole disc golf course. All of these are meant to promote more active lifestyles, improve health, and provide amenities for all age groups and abilities. Educational components by the wetlands that can be used by teachers and the public to help them better understand the importance of wetlands and how they function, as well as the flight of the monarch butterfly, is also included. There are additional accessibility improvements to enhance safety and access to the new amenities from existing pathways and parking areas. Better connectivity provided for pedestrian and bicycle circulation to, from, and within the park, and pathway lighting to improve security and wayfinding are all included in this grant. The OSLAD grant application took into account these items, and there are also under consideration in Camera Park a splash pad in a later version. As I mentioned earlier, we are recipients of a $400,000 OSLAD grant, and this is a matching grant, so we will be budgeting the Village's portion of the grant in the upcoming budget. Over the next few months, there are a number of additional steps that will be taking place in conjunction with this grant, including entering into an agreement with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, who administers the grant, as well as beginning to finalize the plans for Camera Park. This grant does have a two-year timeframe, but we are hoping to begin construction in Camera Park in 2020. On a final note, I would like to thank the mayor and village board, Village administration, the Parks and Recreation Committee, Parks, Recs, and Facility staff, and all of the residents that participated in giving input for the plans that were used to create the Camera Park Master Plan. It was due to everyone's hard work that we were able to be successful in our grant application process. I also want to make sure that everyone is aware that we will be looking for more input over the coming months as we go through the selection process for the amenities that end up in the updated Camera Park. So, please check the Village and the Glendale Heights Parks, Rec, and Facility website for information as we continue to develop our final plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Any questions? Mayor?
Nope. I forgot.
Kate, I just want to let them know that when we get all this equipment in the parks, we're going to have a whole picture of the whole park where all the equipment is in so everybody can see exactly where everything is at.
Correct. Yeah, we're going to work with the company that does the design to make sure that we have a visual that everybody will be able to identify exactly where things go so that it's easier to understand.
Good. Mike?
We're still taking community input, right, from residents?
Yes. So, the next part of this process will be after we sign the agreement. We will actually go back with our architects and start actually putting together what's really going to be in the park. The conceptual plan that's on there puts in the ideas that we want to have in there, and it has ideas that were brought from the community, but we will continue to entertain those ideas as we go through the process. We are kind of locked into the concept of what we did. If we make any major changes, we actually have to go back to the IDNR to do that, but the overall concept of a playground and the fitness stations and all that, input will be involved as to what we choose to do.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I will say something.
Mayor?
I just want to thank everybody that had anything to do with this grant, because that is a wonderful thing. When you figure you can get a grant for $400,000, you have to match it with your $400,000, but that gives you a whole lot of opportunities to fully develop the park, so, thank you.
One more question, Keith. I read today in the paper that they're moving these up, these grants, or, did you read that in today's Herald?
I did not.
Something, instead of prolonging it to four or five years or something, they're cutting it, they're cutting them down to two?
Well, this one, I know, is only a two-year grant. That's the cycle for OSLAD. You have two years from the date that you sign your agreement with the IDNR to complete the project.
Okay.
So, we will be done quickly.
Thank you. Okay, number two, presentation regarding Dakra Municipal Software.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. So, before I get into what Dakra is, Dakra was actually approved at six-month budget for us to use their software, their system, to create some efficiency within the police department when it relates to parking tickets, ordinance tickets, soon-to-be non-moving violation tickets on the street, and considerably increase efficiencies when it comes to our adjudication process. So, that was approved at mid-budget. I just want to give you an update on where we're at and where we're, where we were and where we're going to. So, from the time I've been here 33 years, we have handwritten all of our tickets and used data entry clerks to enter all of the data. So, a little background on how long all of that process takes. This is from our records supervisor, Elma Thorson. Prior to 2019, when we brought in some efficiencies with electronic ticketing with parking tickets, so from 2018 back through the history of the Village, it would take our records clerks seven minutes per parking ticket and ordinance ticket to enter them into our systems, file, and do everything. So, at roughly 9,000 parking tickets a year times seven minutes, you can see how much time that takes. We brought in some efficiencies with electronic ticketing for parking tickets back in 2019 through a system that we use for our vehicle tickets that reduced a lot of input error and a lot of data entry, but only reduced it by about a minute. So, we went from seven minutes to six minutes per parking ticket. Dakra, when it's up and running, will be, will allow us to do everything within about three minutes. So, we are reducing by about 80 hours a month the time that our records department has to spend doing data entry, right? You'll see some reflections in that in our upcoming budget to reduce that, to account for that. So, throughout history, we have spent an inordinate amount of time doing data input for parking tickets, and with all of the new laws coming out with expungements and juvenile laws, our records clerks are having, there's a lot more for them to do than in years past because we are mandated with some, over several hundred expungements that are due soon from prior stuff that they have to go through and do. So, we contracted with Dakra. So, this is just Dakra's mission statement. Alls they do is software management for municipalities. They handle parking, ordinance, and Illinois Vehicle Code violations electronically. Their software, which they're working with Finance Department right now, will eventually work seamlessly with our Finance Department, and instead of our records clerk that input everything, it all happens on the street electronically from our patrol officers, and that is automatically electronically submitted right into records, and then that file is used for everything. When we have to go to adjudication, I'm a little ahead of myself here, just a little bit about Dakra. They are the leaders right now in e-citation technology. Everything in DuPage County is going electronic. All of our arrest warrants as of January 1st are electronic. We swear out a complaint in front of a judge over a computer right now. We swear our search warrant over a computer right now with FaceTime. All, everything that we're doing in DuPage County is moving to electronic, ticketing, electronic warrants, electronic everything. So, Dakra is the leader in this technology, especially in Norland, Illinois. So, streamlines, organizes, automates our adjudication and ticket system, ensures all tickets are properly administered through collections, and so electronic formatting. Right now, when we have adjudication and somebody doesn't make their adjudication, we have to, our records clerk has to manually type a letter for them. Go to the file, see who showed up, who didn't show up. When somebody doesn't show up, find that file, find that name, find that address, and manually type a letter for them. With the software, she'll print, she'll hit a button in the letter, just a form letter, will automatically populate print with the person's name and everything else, and what would take her two or three or four minutes, depending on how long a name is, now takes a push of a button, right? Or will take a push of a button. So, saving significant time and efficiencies. This will integrate with our financial system. We'll be able to take payments and pay right directly into Dakra, which will then fall right into our systems. Right now, our records clerks have to kind of do double duty. They have to enter everything into HTE and then push everything through to Finance, right? So, they're doing, they're doing everything manually. Their software will automatically push everything right into our systems, right? Essentially, just, they handle all the lettering, all the ticketing, all the messaging that goes through it, and you really can't see that too well, but the timeline up there, we're working right now in our second month of trying to get everything up and running. We have a, our records and our administrative sergeant and our deputy chief of support have a conference call about two times a week with them. They have one scheduled for tomorrow, just to keep where we're at, where we've uploaded and are inputting all of our fines and ordinances into their system. We hopefully are, and we have a March 1 goal of getting to our test pilot with all of our systems functioning, and have a couple-week test. Go-live date is middle of March, but it might be April 1st, depending on how long it takes us to integrate all of our systems together. So, this is just-- So, this is just kind of an update on where we've been, where we got to in 2019, and where we hope to get to in 2020. Questions?
Any questions? Mike?
I do. A couple of them. What kind of tickets will the system mostly be used for?
All of them.
All of them? Okay.
Everything except moving violations.
Oh, moving violations will be?
At circuit court.
Okay. And then you were talking about take payments. Take payments where?
Well, we take payments at our window, right, for parking tickets. With local ordinance tickets, you have the ability, instead of going through adjudication, to just come in and pay it.
Okay. Not right there at the squad and?
No, 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 no. We don't take, we don't take anything on it. We don't have credit card receipts.
Okay, just saying. No, that's fine. That's perfect. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Trustee Meritato, could I just ask the chief?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
So, how does this necessarily affect the resident who, let's say, gets a parking ticket? What's different with this than it would be a year ago?
It'll be faster. They'll get notifications a little bit quicker, right, when it comes to adjudication, because they're not handwriting everything. Really, nothing, other than they'll get notified quicker of stuff. That, that part of our process is not changing.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, chief. Okay, let's move on to Chester. Flags?
Yeah. I started this torn and tattered flag program 16 years ago, 2004. Been very successful. So far, we've got close to 7,800 flags as of the end of 2020. And, or 19?
Yeah.
19, 20?
20.
20. And the only issue I have is when they, these huge, huge, yamungous flags, I'll get a call from Keith saying that the flag box is full, so I go out there, pull this struggle or pull this one out, and then the box is empty. If these people would just put these huge bags, flags in a plastic bag and lay it on the side of the, the flag box, I'd appreciate it. Eliminate a couple calls a year. And occasionally, I'll get a, somebody will put a brown envelope in there with a note with some flags in there, and I use the answer. If they have a name and address, I'll answer them. This month, on the 16th, there was a brown envelope in the bag. Oh, another flag, I assumed. I get, emptied the box, I get it home, I count all the flags, I open up the brown envelope, and there was some kids' clothes in there. And it was, they had a return address on Paul Street. I have the picture and everything, the envelope, the picture, the envelope, the picture, the clothes. This is not a garbage bag out there, a box out there. This is for the, the veterans, people that take care of their flags, they want to dispose of them properly. That's the purpose of this flag box out there. To me, it's a slap in the face to all veterans that fight for our country, for somebody to throw that, to use that as a garbage bag. I'm very set, very upset about that. I got the name of the person that was on that. It's on Paul Street. If they want to contact me, I'd appreciate it. That's all I got to say right now about that. That's it.
Okay, is there any other comments? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
I'd like to call this village board meeting back to order. So, a motion could be made to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5, ILCS 120/2C1. Trustee Schmidt?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato? Motion passes, and we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you.